Oh, really?
Yeah.
Chairman, we're ready to begin.
Okay, all right, let's get started. Good evening, everyone. This is the Albert County Planning Commission. It is November twenty, November twelfth. And it is. So we normally start our meetings with a prayer and a pledge. So if we could all stand. Give our hats, please. So first of all, a prayer. I usually ask this for everyone in Jesus's name. That they look out for everyone, that they answer everybody's prayers or requests or wishes. And any troubles that you're dealing with. And I ask that we can try to get some peace in that earth. There is quite an issue there. And in time, I ask that everybody be peaceful in all areas. So with that, in Jesus's name. Amen. Now a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. So tonight, I guess we'll do a roll call, please, Wendy.
Danny Wilcox.
Here.
Kevin Kirkwood. Kevin Kirkwood. Absent. Van Sands.
Here.
Eric Carlson. Eric Carlson. Absent. Mike Buck. Mike Buck. Oh, sorry. DeeDee Shotgrace. Robert Politic.
Here.
John Gresham.
Here.
John Waller.
Present.
Chairman, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's see, next item, staff report.
Yes, sir, just a couple of quick items. I wanted to bring it to the commission's attention that we do have three seats whose terms are up at the end of the year. Those are Mr. Waller, Mr. Buck, and Mr. Wilcox, just for your information. So please reach out to county staff if you need more information about that. And then I had one other update, if that's all right?
Oh, great, please.
Since the last planning commission meeting, there have been two Board of County Commissioner meetings with land use items that were before this commission. So I wanted to update you about those. On the twenty-third of October, the Board of County Commissioners approved the Alora Final Platte and the SpaceX S U R. And on, at that meeting also, the E C East Metro Districts, the date was set for that hearing, and that's tomorrow. And then on the twenty-fourth of October, the Board of County Commissioners heard the E C East, E C East P U D and Preliminary Platte, and those were both approved also. So I just wanted to update this commission about those items.
Thank you. All right, consent agenda, there's nothing, Greg. Okay, thank you. Citizen comments, this is unrelated, any application? See, I don't think we'll have any of those. Okay, I think we'll get to the applications here. Uh, we have a set of meeting minutes. We have the October first meeting minutes. Okay, did anyone get a chance to look at them? Did you? All right. Any problems?
Nope.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve? Thanks. Motion from Van? Okay, second from DeeDee? Okay, do we need to read them? Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you. All right. Now, going into the public hearing process, I usually make a a statement at this time, but at this point, I think we can go without that because I think the rezone, from what I've read, now we need to continue that.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Possible by the commission, please.
Okay, and it's, so if we could, that is, that has been already set, has been renoticed for a date and time that's going to be determined, right?
It was properly noticed for tonight's meeting.
Correct, yes, but...
You all could continue it to the next regular meeting, which is December third.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. All right, so if I could have a motion that we would continue the meeting to the next scheduled meeting, December third. Could I have that, please?
I so move.
Okay, I made the motion. DeeDee? Thank you. Okay, so that's taken care of. Now, the next item on the agenda is our Albert County Water Master Plan, correct? I think we have a presentation.
Good. Good evening, commissioners. I am Eric Larson. I'm the Economic Development Specialist for the county. We've been working on this thing for about a year and a half now, from start to, actually, probably a little bit longer now. The original set of money for this one came out of a grant...
Pardon me for interrupting. I'm sorry, Mr. Larson. Chairman, I did not hear an all in favor or response from everyone.
There was a reason, because I didn't say it.
Okay, it's all yours.
Okay, all in favor of those, the continuance?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. You got that?
Yes.
Sorry, I apologize. It was my mistake.
No worries. So we, we originally applied for this grant to do a water master plan in last year, in about, really, it was spring of 2023, through the Colorado Water Conservation Board. We get a grant for $45,000. We matched that as the county, and we'll spend about an extra $5,000 to finish it up. But overall, about a $95,000 project to get us to this point, and about two years' worth of, you know, blood, sweat, and tears to, to get to this point. The ask of the commission tonight is to, a recommendation that we accept the report, and then it moves up to the B O C C, where they will formally accept that the consultant's work is complete, and now the county owns the, the report, and then it's ours for action. That's really the, that's really kind of the gist of what we're going to get to tonight is we've, we've learned a lot out of this one. As Eisenhower said, it's not the plan, it's the process. We've learned a lot in the process. The thing that we got out of this one was a lot of engagement with the community, both good and bad, but, you know, really engaging with the community is all good. Even when you're hearing negative stuff, you know that you're not, if you're, if you're hearing negative, you know, you probably shouldn't be headed in that direction. And so that would, all of the engagements that we've had with the public on this one have been good. We owe a lot of thank yous to all the citizens who came out for the public meetings and all the other public engagements, for those citizens who filled out online surveys. And from a personal perspective, you know, the residents in this county continue to be excellent about providing feedback in electronic form. I think we had six hundred and fifty-ish survey responses. While it may seem like six hundred and fifty amongst a population of twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand isn't all that much. In the grand scheme of things, that is really good for most municipals, most municipals. A survey out of the blue, six hundred and fifty folks is a lot of people who, who are providing feedback. So citizens, and then also, as the process continued, for them providing continual feedback. The steering committee, they guided us towards, you know, what was going to be useful information, guided us into public engagements, letting us know what those needed to look like and how those needed to be formatted to actually provide good feedback. And then, of course, you know, the, our, our Colorado Water Conservation Board sort of grides on this one. We will still owe them some feedback. We'll owe, we'll owe this report to them, to show them how, and really to break, to abuse the phrase, break ground. Albert County, as a, you know, an aquifer user, none of the renewable stuff, we're not worried about the Colorado River, we're not, we're barely worried about the Arkansas, and we're barely worried about the South Platte, but we are worried about a lot of the stuff that a lot of Colorado isn't focused on, and that's getting water out of the aquifer because that's our, basically our only source. And so we'll owe the Colorado Water Conservation Board and the South Platte River Basin a pretty honest perspective of where we, as sort of the aquifer users, fit in their grand scheme of things as they're considering water in Colorado. So much of that energy gets devoted to what's going on with the Colorado, but the rest of us use water too. And really, the, the last part about this is, this is, this, it's not a plan, it's not a policy. Really, again, the process of doing this was the important part, getting the community feedback and getting them engaged. Now that we'll, now that we'll have this report in our hands, the responsibility is with us as the county, depending on you guys as planning commissioners, depending on the B O C C, to give us as staff guidance to get this to the next stage. If this stuff is really important enough, we'll do the hard work of getting it into policy, we'll do the hard work of getting it into regulation and actually making this enforceable. So that's the, that's kind of where we're at. And that's what I'm going to ask of you tonight, is to, to give the dominus omnis. The report is useful, the, the report is, is good for you guys to use as planning commissioners, to recommend that the B O C C actually accept the final report, and then sort of help us with some marching orders going forward as we turn this into policy and regulation. With that, for the actual content of the report, I'm going to turn it over to Will Koger and Bill Franzak. Will, from our prime contractor on this one, Forstgrun and Associates, and Bill from one of the subcontractors on this one, L R E Water. I'll turn it over to you guys to kind of run down through the findings. Get that out of there.
Good evening. And it's, so. Yeah, thanks. There we go. Okay, I'll start with an overview of the waters, water master plan. We'll talk about the, the goals of the master plan, the public engagement that Eric mentioned, and we reviewed water demands, and did a pretty, pretty extensive groundwater analysis tied to this, and looked at water management strategies. And finally, this all ended with the recommendations that we presented at the back of the report. There were twelve recommendations that we'll talk about later on. Okay, the goals of the master plan. One is to engage with the public. The public has a real hunger for knowledge about the water supply issues in the county, and, and so this, this was very good for, for us to have the public involvement that we did. It was pretty extensive, so that was a, a worthy goal for sure. Also, to understand future water demands, we used the 2050 planning horizon for this. And so we wanted to understand what those demands look like growing to 2050. And then analyze the groundwater supplies in Albert County, very extensive supply, but again, as Eric said, our only supply really out here for future growth. And then review the water management practices in the county, and then to recommend policies based on the analysis of water supplies and demands. Public engagement, we had a pretty extensive outreach, we had questionnaires, and we're reaching out through the county website, we had email distributions to those people that signed up for the regular updates on those. We had newspaper articles, social media flyers, and the steering committee that we met with three times throughout the course of the master plan. The community survey, as Eric said, we had over six hundred respondents, so that was, that was very, very good for, for really a county that has a lot of commuters, and, and it's hard a lot of times to get folks, get focused on, on things out here. So I know that, 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 that's a really good turnout. We had a hundred-plus people attend our open house, and we later on had also some focus group meetings where we discussed the recommended policies with, with groups of, of citizens. This shows where the public engagement responses came from, and by the size of the circle there, you can tell where the larger groups are. And the largest group in, in responding was from the Elizabeth area over to the Douglas County line. And you can see there's a few pockets of, of responses from even outside the county. And the demographics of who we heard from, most of the folks live, live in Albert County, and then there were a fair amount who work, work here or have a business here. And then, as you see the lower chart there, is that the largest demographic for responses was forty-six to sixty-five-year-olds, and then followed by, closely by the forty, sixty-five years and older group. So this is a, one of the, the graphics that they responded to, and that was prioritizing what they saw as concerns regarding water, from the most important to the least important. And you see, starting on the right side here, water demand by, by new development was the most important concern. And then household water supplies, water quality, water rights and legal issues, and water conservation and efficiency, that's going, stepping from the highest concern to the lowest concern. And this, this is a, a, a graphic that we had also at the open house, and this had to do with people could put, put dots on whether they agree with that, were neutral or disagreed on it. And you can see that there are some percentages here of agreement with these different water topics, and that was then used to, to feed into the recommended policies that we had. So we are a growing population, and that's very clear that there's, there's a lot of growth going on, although it does seem to have, have dropped back a bit on a statewide level. In 2020, it was estimated that we had about 5.8 million people in Colorado and just over 26,000 in Albert County. The current State Demographer's Office projections are now showing for 2050 that there would be a projection of 7.5 million for 2050, and that Albert County's population would be just over 35,000 in 2050. Now, the, those numbers have been reduced from what they were when we did the water supply study in 2018, significantly reduced. And the numbers that we used in the water, rural water supply study are shown on the far right here, and those are based on State Demographer Office, Office projections from 2015. And at that time, the State Demographer's Office was estimating that we would have eight, eight point five million people in 2050, and over 68,000 in Albert County by 2050, or by 2015. So a very, very big difference in the, the projections, largely driven by the cost of living here, you know, obviously housing is very expensive here, all of that, so, and just a lot of differences in that period of time. I would say also that even though we, we use the State Demographer's Office numbers in the next chart I'll show you, we actually ended up using the projections from the 2018 study, recognizing that, even if those are high, that's probably better to plan on a higher number and higher demands to, to be checking against the water supply that we have. So this shows the projected water demands, and it grows from, from 2022, under 5,000 acre-feet per year to just under 6,000 acre-feet per year by 2050. So again, this is based on the, the smaller projection increase. So with that, Bill's going to talk more in detail about the water supply side of it.
Good evening. Thanks for having us today, and hopefully we can provide a little clarity on this. We've been involved with the water supply study with, with Forstgrun, and we really took a real hard look at kind of the water resources that are here in the, in the county. And one of our goals was to really take a look at the 2018 rural water supply study and ground truth that, and really take a look at, if you recall from that study, that was a US, based upon a USGS digital model, very complicated, hard to get through, and the numbers that were spit out were kind of, you know, did they make sense? So we went through and take, took a look at that to really see, you know, based upon state engineer guidance on how the groundwater, particularly Denver Basin groundwater, is allocated. Did that model actually come up with, you know, reasonable numbers and reasonable estimates? Then we took a look at how that is being affected by the USGS, now it's been unpublished and not positive it's been published yet, but the USGS study that they did was groundwater levels throughout the county, to take a look at that, as well as kind of updating the 2018 report, based upon state engineer data, well permits issued, well permits that have expired, and so on and so, or decrees that have been issued. Water supplies in the county, we are focusing on the Denver Basin groundwater, which we all know. There is very little alluvial groundwater. There is some streams through here, and obviously a couple of years back, we had some pretty good floods that went through the county. There's also designated groundwater out to the east that's mainly in ranching and farming, that's alluvial as well, but the bulk of the water used, particularly by communities and by individual onlot wells, is in the Denver Basin aquifers. Denver Basin aquifers, there are, well, this is a, is a simple diagram, but there are four primary aquifers that are not connected. They are separated by a shale layer or a reason, basically an impervious barrier, so in geologic time, water really doesn't go between the aquifers. This is, this is a phenomenon that we know because the pressures are different in each aquifer, as shown in this diagram. You can see the water levels, they vary throughout the, the different aquifers. Now, this is just a schematic, it's not, you know, there's nothing there, but in real life, that's exactly what happens. You'll have different pressures in the Fox Hills versus the Dawson, and you'll have different water levels associated with each one of those wells. And if it was all connected, the water levels would be the same. Water, you know, basically flows to the same, same amount. There is actually five aquifers in the, in Albert County because the Dawson is separated into two, the upper and the lower. But this is a, this is a diagram to show that this is also not aquifers that are just one big bathtub underneath the ground. It's a very complicated geological system with different deposits. This used to be, throughout the front range here in Colorado, used to be a marine ecosystem back, you know, hundreds of millions of years ago. And through that depositional pattern, we now have these deep bedrock aquifers, as well as uplift, and then go through a whole geological timeframe. But long story short, there is complication on how this, this groundwater is in there. There are layers of shale and layers of coal seams in some of these aquifers as well, as a result of these depositional patterns of, of having these trees and other organics that were, that were deposited way back in, in geologic time. So it doesn't act as just one big bathtub. So then we actually, we indicated initially, we, we did wells that were constructed in Albert County between 2018 and 2023. That's the best data that we could get, 2024, obviously, we're still in it, and we're still trying to gather all that data. As you can see here, the bulk of the new wells were domestic wells, and these are individual onlot wells, households use well, those, that type thing. And this is a net number of wells that were issued. There were more well permits issued, but then there was also, as I indicated, wells that expired, and so they weren't actually constructed. So we also see other, that takes into everything, whether it be stock wells, whether it be there is a category in the state engineer's office called other, commercial wells, municipal wells, these types of wells, that's what the other category is up there. So roughly, there was about 400 and some new wells, net new wells issued that were domestic throughout the county, not just in the western, northwest part of the county, but throughout. And, you know, roughly around a little over a hundred at wells that were other wells that were issued. These being the stock wells and that type well permit. This is a map that we put together based upon looking at the state engineer data and then using county data for major subdivisions in the county. What this map really tells you, and you can see where the county line is, because you don't want to go west into Douglas County, a lot of the subdivisions that are on the western, northwestern part of the county are on individual onlot wells. There are newer subdivisions that are obviously come on board, that everybody's aware of, that are now on more community wells that are deeper. But what this map shows you is the green are all individual onlot wells. These are all major subdivisions that have been approved by the county, but are individual wells per lot. So you can see there's quite a few of those. There are other major subdivisions that don't have all those green dots, and those are going to be subdivisions that are on those community type wells. And that's where, when we've had the public comments and talked to folks out in the, in the, in the, in the area here about, there's a lot of concern about, you know, are these developments that are coming in that have these bigger wells that are feeding these homes impacting the individual onlot wells here that are in the west and northwest part of the county? So we've, we, you know, there, there is, most of the new development that comes in are having deeper bedrock wells, the ones in the Denver near Arapahoe, specifically on the west side of the county. As you start moving east, you start getting more Arapahoe and Fox Hills, just because the Denver pinches out, and there's no more Dawson. A lot of the, the small capacity domestic wells are in the Dawson aquifer, whether it be the lower or the upper, and that makes sense. I mean, as an individual homeowner, they're not going to drill to 1,000 feet. That's expensive to go down to 1,000 feet for a well. So there are the, there are the wells that are less than 600 foot, and so that makes sense for an individual well. Total groundwater use between 2018 and 2023, roughly about 4,900, 4,100, excuse me, acre-feet is what we have seen. The way we came up with this number, this number is actually a little bit less than what we've seen on the decrees and actually on the well permits that the state engineer issued. These numbers came up as a result of us reviewing the actual well completion reports that are filed with the state. With those reports, you get a pump test. The well tester goes out there and sees how much water can actually be physically diverted out of the well. You'll get a well permit, for an example, and you say like 100 gallon a minute. Well, when the well pump tester goes out there, he'll get 50. And that's just because of the tight formation of the aquifers. It's not like a big beach sand, it's, just won't release the 100 gallon a minute. So we took a look at what that estimate would be. There is, you know, other, there's probably, I would say, 25 to 30% more water that has been decreed, but it's just not physically available to get out of the aquifer. It's just the, the, the aquifers won't release that water, unless you put it in multiple wells, but then you're getting well-to-well interference, and it becomes difficult. What we did here is we looked at Upper Dawson, Lower Dawson, there's not a lot of development that we've seen between 2018 and 2023. If you look back on that previous slide, the reason is, a lot of those subdivisions have already been built out that have the individual onlot wells. Plus, the Denver Basin, the Fox, I'm sorry, the Upper Arapahoe, Upper Dawson and Lower Dawson, it's not a huge aerial extent, it's primarily on the western and northwestern part of the county. As you start moving east, you start running the Denver, Arapahoe, and the Fox Hills. The use of, total groundwater use of the two middle sections are the Denver and the Arapahoe, and these are a result of larger wells that have been issued, primarily to subdivisions in the west and northwestern part of the county, that have, have had large-use wells that have been issued for those, those subdivisions. On the average, probably 250 acre-foot per well ballpark, as we looked at those. And then the final one is the Fox Hills. The Fox Hills really has been tapped, except to tell you get way east in the county because that's the only aquifer that's out there. It's just so deep, it's in this, in the western, northwestern part of the county to really go into as of now. The change in storage and designated, in the basin, in the Denver Basin, we also took a look at. We first looked at what happened in 2018 and the estimates that were put forth there. Those estimates were done as a result of the State Demographer's Office, and, and take a look at, you know, how there would be a decrease in the, in the storage in these aquifers going forward. We took a conservative approach here, and what we did is we said, okay, between 2018 and 2023, we had 4,000 acre-feet of, of water based upon the different aquifers that were issued by the state engineer in those five-year period. We assumed that was going to be constant, wasn't going to change throughout the next 27 years. We know that there's going to probably fluctuations, one year might be a little higher, one year might be a little lower, but we felt that we'll just keep that as a constant. We also kept as a constant the amount of water that was being diverted up through 2018 that was estimated from the... We also kept as a constant, the amount of water that was being diverted up through 2018 that was estimated from the 2018 report. When you run that through till 2020, you can see that less than 1% of, of water and storage is being impacted. There's still a ton of water that's in there. This is water that's in the aquifer. I'm not saying that this is economically available water, but this is water that's in the aquifer baseball that we have. We also, we're going to see probably in various areas around here, you're going to start seeing some impacts locally, and we've seen that already, you know, with pumping in the western part of the country, county and the northwest part of the county where there can be local impacts in, in the change in the designated, change in the Denver Basin, excuse me. But from a county perspective, the amount of water and storage, it, it still looks really well as well as, you know, the 2018 report came up with that. Those estimates as well and our analysis showed the same.
Million acre feet.
Yeah, yes, million acre feet, yes. Sorry. So what are our conclusions? As I just indicated, less than 1% decline in the storage in those five years. And we still see significant number of amount of water on a countywide basis. Again, there could be local concerns that come into play. On a countywide basis, significant groundwater to go out to 2050. The Denver Basin use is expected increase. I mean, let's, let's just face it. I mean, that's going to be the main water supply here in the county for the foreseeable future unless renewable water is brought in from other areas, whether it comes in from the lower South Platte, Arkansas, what have you. Denver Basin groundwater is going to be the primary use, so it's going to increase over time. There's not going to be a material impact in the upper and lower Dawson on use going up through 2050. And the main reason is, again, to go back to that one figure that I pointed out, a lot of these subdivisions have already had individual wells that are put on it. A lot of the, the western and the northwest part of the county has already been adjudicated and decreed for these Denver Basin water in the, in the Dawson and the lower Dawson. And it just doesn't, as we start pushing east where there might be more development outside of Elizabethan into Kyle, where we start getting into the Denver aquifer, which is, and there's just no Dawson available. So we don't see, based upon our, you know, if we can ever look into a crystal ball, a major increase for the upper, lower Dawson up through 2050. Current and future use will continue to decline the artesian water levels. One thing we did notice as we looked through the data, there is still quite a bit of artesian water in the wells themselves. It's not flowing obviously at the surface, but we are seeing what's called, it's called confined aquifer storage. And that's just the water that's in the well. That gives the pressure from the aquifer pushes water up the well. And your, you'll see your water level at say 50 feet when the aquifer level itself is at 400. That's just pressure water that's in, in the well itself. That is going to go down over time, just not only from use here in the county, but use around the Denver Basin from our neighbors in Douglas County and Arapahoe County. So that will still continue to see that to decline. But when we get to the unconfined aquifer itself, which is the actual aquifer that the state puts in their well permits and you see it's between X foot below the surface into the bottom, we're going to see a lot less declines in those, except when you get to the fringes. So when you get on the far eastern part of the county, out in the Fox Hills or where the Denver outcrops or the Arapahoe outcrops, where there's more fluctuation associated with weather, you may see a little more of an impact on those aquifers than you would if they're, they were still in the confined state and, and they're down below the, not impacting by rain. So we're not going to see, and this has been seen in other aquifers as well, a large decrease in the groundwater level once you get to the aquifer conditions. And then the other thing that we noticed as we looked through this, as a lot of these subdivisions that are on the western part of the county, northwest part of the county, that are using water in the upper and lower Dawson, we've noticed a lot of these wells are not completed to the base of the aquifer and the wells are not set to the, into the aquifer itself. They're still pumping water out of the peseometric, out of the, out of the pressure water in the wellbore. And these are based upon records that we've got from the state engineer's office. And so when we look at the decline in some of these wells from the USGS, we're still seeing declines in that peseometric water versus water that's all the way down in the aquifer itself. And again, we've seen this throughout not only in Albert County, but also up in Arapahoe County and actually up into Adams County. Individual property owners, it makes sense. The state engineer is going to say, drill your well and complete it between 400 and 700 feet below the surface. While you start drilling, the well driller gets in there and you see water shooting up the well and it gets to 20 feet below the surface, say we've got water at 20 feet. Stop drilling. Complete the well there because I don't want to spend any more money on that well. Problem is that pressure water pumps off pretty quick as we've seen. So we've seen that and it's been pretty consistent, you know, across some of these wells and some of these subdivisions in the western part of the county. So that is something that, but again, that's, that's not a, an easy solution. It costs money to creep in your well to drop your pump. So it's, it's an issue that will come up in the, in the, in the future as well. And that's all I have from a groundwater standpoint.
So now we're going to turn to some water management strategies that are discussed in, in the report. Yes, sir?
So are we going to link to the very end of the presentation?
Yeah, I was going to, I thought that'd be the right thing to do. Let them do their presentation. We have your questions and we'll ask for citizen comments just like we do here. And then we will get to our part. Sound good? Thank you.
So we know that increasing water demands in the region are prompting more efficiency. There is definitely a, a focus on water conservation, particularly since our drought in the 2002, 2003 timeframe, water providers have really done a lot to conserve water and be able to optimize more of the supplies that they have. They are, as I said, optimizing water usage within their service areas and that can be through a number of different areas like reuse and conservation focus. They are also collaborating on regional efforts. There are some regional water projects that involve several water providers where they are working together to develop renewable water supplies or in some cases bring water from very far away. Management strategies have included water conservation, particularly through water conscious landscaping. In fact, we were just at Arapahoe County this morning and they were adopting new land, new water conscious landscaping standards. So it's, and you've heard about Aurora paying to take out, take out turf in some cases and there's a lot of concern and lots of pretty progressive ideas on, on improving water usage. Strategies have also included water reuse and there's a number of ways to do reuse and I'll have a slide on that in just a minute. And conjunctive use, which is the combining of water, surface water supplies with groundwater supplies and using them both together to, to optimize the use of that water. And it's all geared toward being more sustainable. Best management practices on conservation, these are the top three that were referenced for the, the water, Colorado Water WISE Manual or the State of Colorado. And this is inclining block rate structure whereby you might have a lower block of water for $5 per 1,000 gallons. And then when you go into the upper block of water, maybe it's 750 or even $10 per 1,000 gallons. So you see this inclining block rate that really gives you a financial incentive to stay in the lower, lower levels. So you don't face those high costs of water usage. So that's, that's one of the, one of the better, more effective conservation measures. Leak detection and repair. Sometimes there, there can be some pretty significant leaks underground and, and there are great technologies to locate those leaks these days and get those fixed. And also just overall water system upgrades. The older water systems aren't just, just aren't as tight as our new waters, newer water systems with PVC pipe and, and good fittings and everything. The aged water systems have more leakage certainly than the new water systems do. So this shows water reuse and there are a few different ways of reuse. You can take it from a wastewater treatment plant and you can, or some, some type of, of treatment and you can use it directly for irrigation. And that is the case in, I believe, up in Independence, Independence has a, a second water system that uses reused water for irrigation. There also are ways you can, you can take the treated effluent and discharge it to a river and then go downstream and pick it up, treat the water and then use that for potable water. And that's indirect potable reuse is that's the term for that. Another form of indirect potable reuse would be to take treated wastewater and put it in recharge basins to recharge aquifers and then be able to, to mix that with the native flows in the aquifer and then pull that out through wells and use that for, for water. So there are a number of different ways to implement reuse and it really is all geared toward being able to, to fully use all the water you can and use it as, as efficiently as you can. So when you have, when you've pumped this water already out of bedrock aquifers or you've paid to bring it very far away from another basin in the state, that's new water to the system here and that can be fully reused. And then conjunctive use, this is combining surface water supplies and groundwater supplies. This is a concept aquifer storage and recovery, which right now is under study in the South Metro Water Supply Authority area. That's a South Metro Denver area. They're looking at this on a regional basis. The Centennial Water and Sanitation District that serves Howland's Ranch has been successfully doing this for decades now. I think they've been doing it about 30 years. Where, and whereby with this, you need to have a water right. It can be a very junior water right. But you, you would then get water when it's available, when there are extra flows on the river, free river conditions or very junior water rights can be used. And you can take that water and, and treat it to drinking water standards and then inject it into the, into the ground. And it's protected from evaporation and, and contamination. And it's a, a very good way to store that water and prepare for, for droughts if you, if you need it or, so you can, during very wet years, you can, you know, save that water and then pull it out during the dry years. And so a divisional water resources permit is needed for this. And is a very good strategy if you've got good geographers for that. So this all leads to recommended policies and there are 12 recommended policies in the water master plan. And Eric is going to walk us through those, those policies.
I'm going to do a Cliff Notes version of this one. I'll flip through these and tell you what really a lot of them mean. Really, the first one of these is to ask the water question early in the process. I mean, it's something we have been doing in the planning department for really about two, two and a half years. I've been out here for a little over three. Typically, the first question when a new applicant comes in is, where's your water coming from? And so we, we may just need to make this and, and really sort of ingrain this in policy and regulation as opposed to it simply being a best practice in, in what we're doing right now on most applications that come in anyway. This one, really the, the Cliff Note version is big developments got to dig deep. They, for, again, for the most part, they're already doing this and it makes sense for them to do it. Finding a way to, again, sort of make that regulation, providing incentive, making it so that this is just the way that we do business starts to make, starts to make sense. This one is the boring log data. And again, Bill kind of alluded to this, you know, that the, the model that the, that Divisional Water Resources is using for some of their stuff, you know, it's, it's a decent model, but there the more data that goes into it, if you can pull in the, the boring log data and start to refine that model, basically what DWR has is a mile by mile resolution on their sort of what's underneath. If through boring data, they further refine that, you could be able to tell somebody, well, we think that the, we think that the water is 650 to 850 as opposed to 625 to 825 in this particular section. It doesn't, it doesn't add that much to the overall picture. But if it's a difference between drilling another 25 feet to, to get the longer supply, that again, starts to make some sense. There is some option of making sure that new developments have, you know, are, are looking at the interconnections. If you've got one big development within another, within a half mile of another development, it probably makes sense for them to at least take a look in their business, you know, sort of in the business development if it makes sense for them to connect. The hard part of this on the policy side is deciding what that distance is and what that economics, you know, what the, what the business model actually has to say. Is it a quarter million dollars? Is that a fair price for interconnection? Is it nothing less than a half mile? Those are the kinds of things that as we start turning these into policy and regulation, that we have to start looking at, no kidding, numbers. This is a good recommendation. Is it quarter million dollars to connect? Is it a quarter mile to connect? We have to start putting the, putting numbers behind some of these things. The, the participation in regional renewable water, I realize and I'm not dumb. Those things cost a lot of money. It costs a lot of money to move water around the state. It's probably outside of our budget. However, being aware of what's going on in the front range, everything that the front range is doing to increase their renewable supply, I really don't care how much Douglas County spends on it, if it means that they're using less water out of the aquifer. That means that water exists in the aquifer. So while there's a tendency to sort of, you know, think that we're all alone, unaware and unafraid, what the front range is doing to access renewable ends up contributing just a little bit more to the availability in our own aquifer and across the big aquifer puddle. As Bill said, you know, the wells, the message has got to be drill to the bottom of your permit. If you want to have that, if you want to have that 300 year supply, you got to drill all the way down. It's a simple message. It's easy to make that, you know, easy to make that recommendation. Somewhat harder to follow through on, but an easy recommendation to make. New development, continue to use best practices. Again, those water conservation practices that Will talks about, making sure if, if there's anything that we can do for landscape standards in some of these larger developments, if we can ask them to do the tiered water rates where if you're watering your lawn constantly, you're just going to pay more. Water use and great water systems. Again, we have a couple of our developers out here who are already doing some of these things. Encouraging the next round and the next round and the next round of development to stick with those best practices. If we find that those things are getting too expensive for them, then perhaps throw in a little bit of money, some incentive at them, or simply realizing that if you're going to do those things, it's going to be too expensive to develop out here, pricing them essentially out of the market. That, again, that there's all these forums around the state. It's good to know what's going on around the state. I realize that when the South Platte guys get together, they're talking about rivers. But again, anything that we can do to be aware of what's going on elsewhere in the state on water issues, at least to have a voice at the table. And again, the, the big part of this for the Colorado Water Conservation Board is a county that depends on this non-renewable supply. We need to be in those conversations. Just because we're not talking about the Colorado, we have our own concern. If we're not at the table, somewhere, those concerns are never going to be heard. And this goes into another sort of, a little bit of a tangent about, you know, we're, we're going to continue to have a lot of arguments out here about water and what we're going to do. But to be honest, we also have to have some of these conversations and start getting ourselves into conversations in Denver so that they realize it's not all about the Colorado, it's not all about the Arkansas, it's not all about the South Platte. There are other users out there that are not river users. If we're not involved in those conversations, they're not going to realize we have another concern. Existing water providers, again, some of these things, the interconnections that we can foster and that we can encourage, it's hard. It costs a lot of money to interconnect systems, especially when you're talking about developments that are four to five miles apart. Those get to be really expensive bills, but perhaps the advantage in redundancy. apart, those get to be really expensive bills, but perhaps the advantage in redundancy may start to make sense at some point. Maybe not now on the economic side, but if the cost of drilling down into the into the into the Laramie is a million dollars, suddenly laying a million dollars of pipe between two developments starts to make a little bit more economic sense. Encouraging some of the use of the advanced technologies like aquifer storage and recovery. I know that there's some citizen citizen concerned about, you know, if we're gonna just pump wastewater into the aquifer, that's not the way the ASR really works. ASR typically, in some of the systems that we've seen, actually goes into the ground either as clean or cleaner than it came out with some of the contaminants, some radon removed, some other kind of stuff removed. And so the the ASR, it's a viable option, again, for some of the larger developments, for some of the larger water systems, that ASR option starts being a real economic advantage, especially it gives them, you know, their use rate starts to fall because they're pumping back into the aquifer. There is good news on this one, the USGS study, it's funded for another five years, at least in the budget that I just saw this afternoon. And so we're gonna continue to fund this and understand, try to use the GS or USGS data to refine our picture of what's actually going on underneath us. If that starts to pull in more dat, if that starts to pull in more data, that'd be awesome. If it starts to refine the models, that's even better and it gives us a better understanding of what's actually happening underneath the surface. And finally, and this, of all the things that we have come away from this with, I'd say that this is the biggest one, is that the public is, pardon the pun, thirsty for more information about water in the county. How much we have, how it's getting used, where it's at, all the five W's about water underneath us, they're curious about them, they wanna know more. And so when when I talk about some of the recommendations, my primary one walking away from this is we need to do a better job of engaging with the community about what the heck all of this water stuff means. I've appreciated Bill explaining pezio metric pressure to me. We need to have more people understand what pezio metric pressure is in all of these conversations that we're having about water around the county. And so that's the end of the, that's really the end of the formal presentation on the on the recommendation side. I'm gonna close with just a couple of of our own takeaways. Before I forget, wanna thank Forest Garden and Associates, Ellery Water and Logan Simpson for actually doing this for us. It's it's been a productive engagement from our staff perspective to get to know more about this. When I briefed the Economic Development Council of Colorado in spring of 2024, I said the most important conversation I will have for the next probably two or three years is always gonna start off, well, where are you gonna get your water? Every conversation on economic development, every conversation on development out here is starting with water. So thanks to Will and the team for getting us smarter about it. Not saying we've got all the solutions, but we're at least smarter. And so finally, our takeaways and some of the action items that we are gonna take away from this. My proposal, my number one proposal is to start and not, or to start, sorry, I just said Noxious Weed Advisory Board. The Noxious Weed Advisory Board, for those of you who haven't been engaged with them in any way, shape or form, has been a really good model of getting citizens involved, using them to educate the public, using them to inform the commission and keeping the, you know, and and really making citizens smarter and more engaged on on the issue. If we could do a citizen water advisory panel based on that model, I think we would be in, I think we'd be well-served. They could lead the community on engagement and education, they could advise on priorities for policy and crafting some of these regulations that we're gonna need to put into place if we want to. They can help us participate in some of those forums that we're talking about and and keep us informed about what may be happening at the South Platte River Basin Roundtable and also make some recommendations. There's a couple of places where we could actually start to spend money. If they've, if they think that it's worth spending money on it, we would sure appreciate their recommendation. After all, they're the ones who are, no kidding, footing the bill. And really, the hard work of this one becomes drafting actual policy, you know, drafting actual, or coming away from with priorities and then starting to actually draft policies. You know, the the a policy to drill deeper, to promote recycle reuse, those are actually pretty easy kills in the grand scheme of things. Encouraging new development to consider those interconnections, again, quarter mile, quarter million dollars, whatever those numbers are, we'll have to find where those where those matter. Actually getting involved with our regional part, regional partners is gonna be a big thing. We're gonna continue to fund that USGS study because it is informing us and keep and help us keep track of where the water levels are. You know, there's also the issue of, you know, we do not have a water cop on staff. I don't know that we want to have a water cop on staff, however, if we're gonna continue to deal with, you know, if we as staff are gonna continue to deal with water issues on a regular basis, we may have to hire somebody to come in and do education for us or send some of our planners to additional courses to get smarter on the water supply beyond what, you know, beyond what the water study is is telling us. If we've gotta spend money getting folks smarter or if we've gotta bring in some hired help to keep us smart on water, those are, those things may actually need to happen. I joke about it, but for some of our larger developments, having, I joke, a water cop, but having somebody to regularly monitoring, you know, regularly monitor the trust but verify on some of our large developments to understand what, how they are actually using water and if they're staying within their limits, it's a way of promoting the, you know, some trust that in fact, these large water users are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And last but not least, there is a real possibility that we we may have a couple of worst-case scenarios out there that we're gonna have to spend some money. We'll have to find some kind of rotating loan fund, perhaps some grant money to help some of the people who didn't drill deep the first time through and we may have to, in fact, drill some of those wells. If they can prove interference, it's a hard case, but if if they can prove interference, we may have to actually get to a point where we're finding the money to help those folks out. We do not want folks to, you know, go go dry because somebody told them, you know, in nineteen seventy-two, yeah, we'll just, yeah, you're good. If that's the difference between that house being abandoned and that house continuing to be a residence, you know, for a citizen in the county, surely that is worth at least taking a look at if there's some money out there to help them with that. Those are the big takeaways from this thing. Again, thanks to all of you for for reading through the report, your continued feedback on it. And as we move forward, you know, we are gonna come to you inevitably with policy and and regulation stuff that we're gonna need you to, you know, give us nods or nods in the horizontal plane, that these things are gonna be worked, that these things are gonna work, that you feel comfortable based on the data you're getting out of this report, that those are actually workable things. And so with that, I guess we'll open for open for questions from the board and for public comment.
Do public comment first. So be prepared for questions. So the next part of this, we'll go through just like a hearing. Public comment, do we have anyone who would like to make a comment regarding this this presentation or anything else? Okay, so at that point, I don't see anybody interested in public comment, so let's go on with our questions. Go ahead, I think you had some.
Yeah, I have a few questions. How was the steering committee members chosen? I'm just gonna start at the beginning of the presentation and just kinda go through with the questions that I have. How were they chosen? I see some developers on there, I see some people with economic development and a couple of citizens. I also wanted to ask if Mitch Trevi, listed as an Elbert County citizen, if he in fact lives in the county? And is he a commercial real estate developer?
He he does not live in the county and yes, he is a commercial real estate developer.
Because it just says Elbert County citizen. So I saw that and I said, well, I'm seeing big blue signs all over the county and I'm seeing this as Elbert County citizen going, well, wait a minute, does he live in the county? I don't think so.
No, that's right. Well, and again, we're with the the draft caught most things, but I think we've skipped some of, we we caught the all the words on paper, but we'll we'll double check on that one. As for the, as for the composition of the steering committee, when we first started looking at this, we looked for, we were looking for folks who had a stake in water, you know, in water in the county. The the developers do have a stake in, you know, where we're going with the community. And so there were a couple of the ones that we reached out to. We reached out to most of the major water systems. We reached out to the the Elbert Water and Sanitation District, we reached out to the couple of metro districts that are out there, Spring Valley. And we also asked the, you know, as as a major provider, we asked the town of Elizabeth to to send a body as well. Most of, most of the water or most of the districts actually came back and said, ah, no, we we really don't wanna be involved. A couple of them, we we got some good, we got good data from Elizabeth, we got good data from Elbert, we got good data from Kiowa. So they they fed us information on policies and some of the water usage data, but they were not involved in the steering committee. We actually reached, we reached out to other citizens who we knew had a, have had a historical role in water in the in the county. Robert Rowland, a former commissioner, was involved in that, provided us excellent feedback. He was our skeptic in the group. I didn't, I I will admit, I didn't always appreciate his skepticism, however, he did keep us honest and did keep us moving forward on a lot of things. And so, you know, even even from a, you you don't wanna la, you don't want everything to be a yes answer in that room and Robert definitely kept us kind of on our toes asking questions that that mattered. And so really, citizens that were, citizens that had expressed some concern over water and had showed up at something with to do with water, the developers, and again, sort of the the water systems didn't actively participate, however, they knew that it was going on, they provided us data that was actually useful for for the purposes. The the role of the steering committee is, was really to help us understand what was gonna be useful for citizens to actually understand, what'd be useful for them to understand, their own questions about what was going on with water. So they helped us frame some of those initial, well, what do we really want out of this kind of thing? As well as we're truly kind of engaged on the, well, when it comes to community engagement, what's the best way to engage the community? What are the questions that we wanna ask? What are the questions that you don't wanna ask? What are the statements that you wanna make? What are some of the statements that you don't wanna make? And really sort of helped guide how those discussions were gonna go down, how those engagements were gonna look, as well as providing feedback on some of the survey questions and the larger, kind of the overall piece of how we engage with the community. Again, you know, there were there were some of these, some of these questions about, trying to think of one, that ag ag use, you know, really, ag use is just kind of an untouchable in this county. Ag uses a lot of water, ag uses water well. Ag uses water, they use it well. And so, you know, they there was some of those discussions about, hey, what is, you know, what do we really wanna address? What's the right questions to ask? What are the, you know, what questions don't we ask because it doesn't, you know, because we're not gonna, we're not gonna go there?
Yeah, well, that that was my first question. And one of the reasons I asked that question was, I asked if I could, as an observer, not say a word, as a citizen of the county, as a member of the planning commission and a candidate for the B O C C, I was told no, I could not attend and be an observer.
I.
That's not a public outreach to me. So I I took it personal, that's why I'm asking.
Okay.
And you got citizens, you list people as citizens that aren't citizens of the county. So that's, that's my first question. My second question is, first of all, I appreciate you trying to use the demographic projections from two thousand eighteen, sixty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five in air on the side of caution, but in your graph, you use the demo, state demographer's numbers. Why did you use those numbers if you're, if you're gonna, if you're gonna use the two thousand eighteen numbers? Why would you include that graph in your presentation?
It was stated that it's helpful to see what what the projections are using the state demographer's information, although we did hear a lot of feedback that those numbers, they didn't feel like were from the public, that they felt like those numbers were too low and so that's when we later on decided to use the higher.
To me, there was some confusion, well, are we using them or not? Because you're including the graph with that. And so I was like, well, why not throw that graph out and use your own graph based on the numbers of sixty-eight thousand? Why wouldn't you create a different graph?
Right.
So that was my confusion there with those those numbers.
Yep, fair comment.
So another question is, is anywhere in this study, are we including the use from the neighboring counties that are using the same water from the same Denver basin? We're only five percent, six percent of the water use, right? So, okay, four percent.
I think it's forty percent. It is, last I heard, it was four percent back when we did the study.
But we're, we're basically looking at the Denver basin and saying, hey, well, this is what Elbert County's using. But if we're doing a comprehensive study, we have to take into account the other users of that same Denver basin that we're using and I'm not seeing those numbers in here.
Right.
So how how was that a comprehensive study? Just picking out what Elbert County's using and not including any of the numbers of the other users?
Yeah, just the fact that it's Elbert County Water Master Plan, we focused on Elbert County. But we have worked with other counties as well and we know that there's usage obviously throughout the the Denver area.
They have population projections for to twenty twenty fifty as well. And we need to know what they're gonna project and what their water uses so we know how much water we're gonna have into the future.
Yeah, Douglas County, for example.
I don't know, to me, we can't just look at it in a bubble.
Right. And and I don't believe we did. We we worked together on the El Paso County Water Master Plan and also on the Rappo County Water Supply Study. Douglas County is just in the process of preparing to do a Water Master Plan. And so we've, we've worked on this, being informed by what goes on in the surrounding counties, but we didn't specifically call out those numbers in the Elbert County plan.
I got a question in regards to number two on recommended policies.
No.
No. It's, it's in regards to the, can we pull that slide back up, please? It's number two on recommended policies.
They did.
So we're not gonna let them pump the upper and lower Dawson, what we're gonna let them use those numbers in their calculations. Right? Is that what I'm getting out of that paragraph?
Yeah, and that's, that's part of the, I mean, the part of it is that they have a, that they can use that, they can use that, it's part of their water right.
It is what their water rights.
Right.
But we're saying here, as a recommended policy, we let them use it in their calculation because it is their water rights, but we don't allow them to pump from those. So if we're not gonna allow them to pump from those upper and lower Dawson, why would we let them include it in their calculations?
This is directing toward.
I don't know, I don't, I don't get why we would do that as a recommended policy.
This is directing toward centralized water systems using the deep rock aquifers as a priority and and that's.
And that's the main focus on this, is to use those-
No, I understand that. I totally understand that, and I agree with that policy. But I don't know why we would let them include all of their rights in the calculation if we're not going to allow them to pump from the upper and lower Dawson. Why would we do that?
That's a difficult topic because they have legal rights to that water.
So that could be a condition of approval for that development. That could easily be a condition of approval for that development. And we could not allow them to use those, that in their calculation. Would that be fair to say, or no?
Yeah, and that's going to be, I mean, this is where, this is where we get into this very difficult conversation about how would we turn a recommendation into an actual policy? How it goes into a regulation? If we can, you know, if it makes, if the, you know, if the lawyers sign off-
That's my, that was my next question. That's an attorney, water attorney's question, for sure.
Yeah, and that's, and again, this is, you know, this goes into the, the, as we get deeper and deeper into a lot of this as policy, we start looking for, we're going to start looking for help. Engineers, lawyers, the too expensive professionals that I can think of right now.
Yeah, so let's go back to that first. Right now, everything is governed by the state. Every application that comes through here is governed by the state. So whatever we do as a county, then applies additional regulation and laws.
That's why it's a water, that's why it's a water attorney question.
Well, and that's why, when they come forward, so you recommending stuff like this, this is a huge, a huge push, because then you put the county in a position to that we become the regulating authority on top of the state. And I, yes, that's what you put. So if you listen to it saying, you know, then you then infringe on people's rights on something they have with what's under their feet.
It's an ownership, and we're trying to walk the line there.
I know you are. I know. See, and I, that's exactly right. That's why we kind of push to stay out of it, because we don't want to be a regulating authority. Now, there is people who are all in for that. So that's a, that's a choice that we have to make in this county, is to start regulating people's rights, which is water, property, everything else. How far do we go? And so, right now, though, where we're sitting, state regulates it, it comes to us. We've already regulated it to a point because we've applied a three-hundred-year water rule. And so anything above that is at county level.
And I will, and I will say, again, back to my comment, that some of this fight is not an internal fight-
No.
-to the county.
No.
There is, if it's that important to this county, and I would say that water is probably one of our bigger issues that we take, is if the fight needs to happen in Denver, we can have the fight in Denver. However, that gets to be lots of engineers and lots of water attorneys. It's not, I will never say that that isn't a fight that's not worth having. But I, but I think my preference from an immediate policy perspective is to get involved in those, in those regional forums, where we can figure out where our position needs to be and where, and if injecting ourself in state-level policies starts to make sense.
That, okay, I see where you're coming from. And to your point, yeah, I can, that would be useful. I can see that only, let Mike finish, but I have other ideas.
I'm a former intel guy. I believe in getting the information.
Well, yeah, but I-
Watching the fight.
I have different ideas that I would consider. Go ahead, Mike.
So just one more quick question on ASR, aquifer storage and recovery. Is there natural sites that we can pinpoint in Elbert County that would make a good site for that? Or is it just mostly near the big developments where they're going to be able to make that happen?
Do you have any opinion on that? There have been some reports that have been put together by the state on areas of the state that are conducive for aquifer storage and recovery. I don't have off the top of my head what those areas may be in Elbert County themselves. But to answer your question succinctly, yes, I think you could find areas that are not just right underneath a development or underneath a specific parcel to be able to adhere to aquifer storage and recovery and allow that water then to be used. How, you know, based upon that-
That would be something I would like to see in a study, that would include that in a study. That said, oh, and we've identified some of these locations, blah, 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 and this is where we recommend looking at that.
I could speak to that a little bit, because I have a very good friend who does that. And all you need to do is drill a well into the aquifer, okay, to store. You don't need, you can do it next door if you wanted to, if you had an aquifer underneath you that you could reach. It doesn't, it doesn't matter where it is. It's the fact that, I'm sorry, yeah. The issue is, is that we need to start doing it. And that, I see too many open ponds around here where the water just goes in the air. And so the more we do that and insist that they store the water in the aquifer, then the better off we are.
You're absolutely right. You can do it that way. I mean, obviously, the state regs to be able to do that, like actual aquifer storage and recovery. What I was referring to are there are better areas within each-
That's what I was asking too.
I mean, you can obviously do it wherever you want, but there are certain areas, like Lost Creek, for example, or the north here, is a huge area that the state has identified as a great area for aquifer storage. It's like, I don't know, the geology deposition is ideal for that type of technical. And the issue that we see here in Elbert County is the data that the state engineer looks through when they do their determinations of water right. I mean, they're basing it upon geophysical logs, but their geophysical logs are spaced, you know, throughout the county. And what they try to do is, and this is literal, they take those geophysical logs, they put them up on a wall, and they try to estimate, you know, the thickness of the aquifer between a well that's one mile away from another well. Based upon the geology that we know, that can change significantly in that one mile, in that same aquifer. So what we've been able to do in other counties is what we use, it's a software program called Petra. We're able to take in COGCC wells, any other types of wells that have geophysical information in it, to be able to really kind of fill in those data gaps. And we have really found some, DWR loves it. We've been able to find areas in Douglas County, or Arapau County, that are significantly different with the state engineers. And they're fine with that, because in each and every decree, they say it's a precise, specific condition. They're going to give you what's based upon the rules and the maps that are in there. And that's all based upon good data, but again, it is interpretation between sections of one well and another, miles apart, best available science. But if we can get better science in there to really understand what that's going underneath there, using some of these technologies, we can find some of these pockets that just the state wasn't able to come up with when they were bringing together these geophysical logs when they put the rules back together in nineteen eighty-five. It's called Petra, P E T R A. Yes, and we've been doing this-
I've got a simple question. And we're talking about these, I'm sorry, Mike's still going?
No, he's pretty much done with, I was going, and I think he goes around the table afterwards.
Yeah, I just wanted to stick to the same subject, but, thank you. Where's the water come from that's going to be injected back into the aquifer?
It can be reused water, water that's used through the homes and then treated and re-injected.
Oh, it's collected?
It can be collected in ponds, it can be collected however, whatever's done.
I drive around and I don't see a whole lot of lakes.
No. I mean, another opportunity could be, well, a couple of years ago, we had some major flooding in the county. I mean, it wiped out a lot of stuff. Is there a way to be able to burst some of that and get that underground? Those are some of the ideas of reusing water and taking that water, that's, you know, where, you know, whether people believe it in climate change or rains or whatever, we're getting good significant rain events certain times. We have a lot of snow that's wet out there now. Is there a way to take some of that water that's now in the creeks and get it underground? That's can be investigated and looked at further. Absolutely.
And into, you know, we saw that where, what are, you know, what are the, what's the composition of wells in the county? The reality is, the two-thirds of the wells in this county are individuals. So in terms of making that, you know, in terms of reuse and ASR, you know, that's not going to apply to, by far, a majority of the wells in the county. However, as those systems and, you know, sort of the community systems start to enter into the conversation, those are systems where some of that, some of the new technologies, including ASR, could be, you know, fit into their own model of what they're, you know, how much they're going to, how much they're going to take, how much they're going to reuse, how much it could go back in the ground. So again, the reality is, is that the two-thirds of the wells in the county, not applicable. However, there are some opportunities. And while, I, you know, I hate to admit it, that at some point, a lot of this becomes about little wins. Rather than building a new HESF reservoir and storing, you know, a couple thousand acre feet of water, sometimes the conservation stuff by an individual household is enough to preserve their water for another couple of months, for another year, maybe for another ten years, if they're watching it, if they're catching those leaks before they start to overwhelm the system. So there are some, there's a lot of, you know, a million to a million here. Pretty soon, you're talking real money. A gallon here, gallon there. Pretty soon, you're actually talking about enough winds to maybe extend households' supply for a little bit longer.
That brings up a question. You mentioned a water committee, conservation committee. Is the county ready to start that up?
We'll take your, we'll take your recommendation. Does, I mean, does it sound like, I mean, to be honest, it needs to sound like a good idea? And then, what I would say about the steering committee is, part of the steering committee was who ended up showing up? I mean-
That's super unfortunate. Yeah, that's the first question I have, sitting right here on my face. Who decided that, since I even told Mark that I wanted to be on the steering committee? I also went, do you know what Marisol is all about?
I do not.
I will. I'm just bringing it to the camera. It's a movie. All about this kind of thing, but we really, I mean, there was lots of us that wanted to be on that committee, but we were not asked.
Let's see if we can get back on track and go.
We'll come back to good order and discipline at some point.
I have a few questions, and just being more of a realist, you know, you came up with twelve recommended policies. In your mind's eye, as the experts here, over in the next ten years, and over in the next fifteen years, over in the next twenty years, how would you prioritize some of these recommendations? You blanket out these recommendations. Where are your top five recommendations that you see making an impact in analysis, community, information, in the realities of, you know, dealing with situations like you described with people who didn't punch their wells, you know, far enough and they're relying upon the, you know, artesian pressure, you know, to be able to maintain, you know, a level above their pump? What are, out of these twelve, the top five?
Give me one second.
Because I think, you know, for, for, you know, to be able to effectively have an action item or action list that you wanted to bring to us or bring to the board of county commissioners, you know, I would want to see what are those, those things that we should really pay attention to now? Because you're going to have arguments about all twelve of them, you know. What, you know, you're the experts. Give me the top five.
So I will, I will say, based on what we learned from this, that list is my one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, roughly in order.
Or seven?
Hold on. Why am I, as soon as I figure out how to make my-
Oh, that's okay.
-projection go again. Hey, there we go. I mean, really? Those seven there at the bottom, those would be my priorities. Broken down into, you know, what's a, you know, what needs to be a policy? What may need, we may need to find some money for? And what's the simplest show, you know, what, some of these things are just show up?
Right.
Participating in the regional forums, you know, that's a, we're invited, we show up. It's a, you know, it's a relatively low cost, easy win.
It's information, it's data.
Yeah. And so this, so based on, based on what the, that list of twelve, and sort of simplifying it and boiling it down to things that I think the county could achieve in some order, some rough timeline, and with some amount of money that isn't, you know, millions of dollars, but that's relatively cheap investments, that would be my list right there.
Okay. In regards to policies being made, and obviously, we heard a little bit of a spirited discussion. My biggest question was, you know, when you talked about a water cop or, you know, whatever the case may be associated with enforcement, how do you determine who is the proper adjudicating authority? You know, and because to me, that needs to be the action item, because if you're going to develop policy and you're going to piss somebody off who's then going to take you to court, it does you no good. So, so, you know, and that's why I asked him quickly, I said, the adjudicating authority for anything associated with water is the state, it's not the county. So, you know, obviously, we have some developers who are trying their best, you know, so far in making their presentations to us for, you know, new PUDs and what they're trying to accomplish. We got, what was the most recent one that's going to pull water from Arapau?
They're all deeper.
No, 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 no. From, no, 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 from the county. Aurora, sorry.
Aurora, there you go.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
It went out on the corner on, um-
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Aurora's twenty thousand, but they're pulling it from-
And I believe that was due to a recommendation from the, no, the planning department, right? Wasn't, what, didn't they say to them, hey, would you look at pulling water from Aurora?
I don't remember that. I do not remember that. No, I don't think that was the case.
Oh, it wasn't the case?
No, I think that was their, their decision.
Developer went to Aurora and said, can you-
Yeah, right.
Water, because they-
And it's right across the street.
Right across the street.
That was, that was a great move.
Yeah.
So I didn't know, you know, if, so that was the developers that actually got together and had a mind meld.
Yeah, that had nothing, I do not, and I don't think the county would ever be in a position to recommend anything like that, and I know they didn't.
But if there's a policy associated with that, you know, but, you know, how do you enforce a policy if you're not the adjudicating authority?
Good question.
Well, how are you enforcing the three-hundred-year water rule?
Well, the state determines how much water's out there.
Well, because of something we've asked the state to do.
Yeah.
We've asked the state to do. Okay. I think this should be prime in any of our discussions with the county commissioners in making any kind of recommendations.
And that's why, and again, that's why it's on the screen, is to like get, try to see what, try to read this table and see if these are realistic. See if these are, you know, given, you know, given the presentation and, you know, some time to brew, frankly. If these are actually things that make sense for us to start prioritizing. Prioritizing means we get directed to do that as staff.
Right.
Being directed to do that as staff means you're spending money on us doing it. And so, again, the, you know, this is, this is our initial pass at this and looking for, yeah, that makes sense, or hell no, that's not going to, that doesn't make any sense at all. And so as we, you know, as we let this sort of marinate, this is what, you know, refining list, list, going forward is going to be important.
Okay. Next question. Statistically, what are the potentials or out of the number of wells within the concentrated area in northwest, northwest section of our county that are residential wells, supporting individual, individual, you know, homes? Statistically, how many of those are potentially at risk at not being deep enough? Uh, statistically, how many of those are potentially at risk at not being deep enough in the, in the aquifer that they were granted?
Phil, do you have a rough one?
Yeah, I have a rough number. I know you're not gonna like it. It's about ninety percent.
That's interesting.
Every single well I've looked at in these subdivisions have not been completed either to the depth of the aquifer as recommended by the per- by the permit, or the pump is set too high.
Okay, by what years?
Yeah, I was just gonna-
Primarily, it's nineteen seventies and the nineteen eighties.
Okay.
Oh, that, that, that's what I was, that's, I wanted to be sure you, you, you state that, because, yeah.
There, there are some in the nineties that are-
Nineties, that were probably, yeah.
Early nineties too, but as you start getting later in time, you now start bumping-
They were aware of that.
They're aware of that, and you start bumping up into, hey, there's no more water available, or if it is, it's not non-trivial four percent.
Right, right.
You have to get an aqua plant, and no one's gonna go get an aqua plant for an individual all-inout well. So that's where you're starting to see it, just there's not enough Dawson water left, like, I mean, I want, not from a storage standpoint, but-
No, no, no.
Permits and this type thing for people to come in and get a whole bunch of new more wells. But yeah, the, the more recent ones, people actually have been completing to the base of the aquifer.
And it's the state even granting wells? Permits in Dawson, because the last time-
Lower Dawson, yes. Upper Dawson-
Upper Dawson, I-
I don't think they are. I'd have to go back and check my data.
Okay.
They will do re, they will do redrills.
I have not heard anybody going to the upper Dawson in, unless they've had an established subdivision that's been there for years and they've got, already got the approval for that.
Correct, and that typically would be a decree issued by the water court.
Okay.
And you'd get an individual all-inout well to where your depletions were met by your non-ab倾式系统 system. So that's, that's kind of what I've seen as being any new wells that would go in there. But again, especially with an aqua plant, that was developed back in the seventies and eighties.
So why would it be incumbent on then the county to provide any financial assistance to those who screwed up?
It's if it's, leave the last part of it, provable interference.
Right.
Means that somebody is interfering with their well.
Uh, no, understood. So that's why I'm asking, how, how is that proven? What is the determination of that interference?
I think that would be data which would go to bullet four, getting more and more data from the USGS, seeing where those areas are in the western part, the northwest part of the county that we are seeing those declines, not only in the peseometric head-
Right.
-but also in the aquifer itself. Right now, we have a pretty good data pool, goes back to two thousand eighteen ballpark, maybe a little bit forward in some wells.
Yeah.
I wanna extend that. I wanna see, is there some long-term areas where we're seeing subdivisions with declines? Individual all-inout wells, where we're seeing declines that it's really causing a problem? Or is it just simply enough to, we need to just lower the well, or lower the pump, excuse me?
Lower the pump, uh, down-
Because most of the aqua, most of the wells I've seen are at least in the aquifer of concern. So they actually have drilled into the upper Arapahoe, or upper Dawson, or the lower Dawson.
Right.
It just didn't go to the base. And then on top of that, I see wells that are, at the top of the aquifer is four hundred feet, for example, they set the pump at two hundred. And so we're seeing declines, and yeah, water levels declining below two hundred, my well's going dry. The water aquifer's going dry. No.
No, you have to drop your pump.
You gotta get your pump down to the bottom of it.
Yeah.
Minimum to the bottom of the wellbore, that's concurrent there, and that's gonna extend the life of the well significantly. Uh, one of the things that just, for the information of the, of the commissioners that we found with the subdivision in Arapahoe County, that was going through similar issues, uh, kind of an isolated subdivision, Aurora's all around it. They have a bunch of wells that are constructed in Denver and the upper Arapahoe, which is, uh, the main aquifer's up in Arapahoe County. These well drillers, for whatever reason, drilled to the bottom of the aquifer, will put in a diameter of hole that won't allow a pump to go to the bottom of the hole to pump the water to the top. I mean, I have no idea what these drillers are doing. But when you look at the data, I got a four-inch hole, I can't put a two-inch pump to move water a thousand feet up, it's not gonna work.
Won't work.
So I've talked to- What's that?
That's the subdivision off Gun Club out there.
Yeah, it's, uh, Thunderbird Estates.
Yeah.
Yep. I- i- it's, it's unfortunate, and, and I know property owners don't wanna hear it. I'm, but I'm like, and I've talked to a property owner that dropped his pump five times. Says, I can't go any deeper because I can't get the water up to-
Yeah, no.
I said, you're not even to the top of the aquifer yet. You're eight hundred feet, the top of the aquifer's nine twenty. I, I, I wish it was something I could do, but I, there's not a technology there. And we are looking into that about with this subdivision, is there a way to sequence wells? We put the wells in, or pumps in series to see if we could help them out.
Right.
But it's all gonna cost money, and it's just-
That's, yeah.
It's unfortunate, I mean, but I get it. I mean, I'm a property owner, I have a well, I'm out there, a well driller's out there. He's already thirty-five, fifty grand into a well, stop it. I'm done. I wanna finish it here, I got water at twenty feet, screw it. Well, ten, fifteen years from now, you're gonna be, you're gonna pump that water off, and you're not gonna have water there. I get the decision that's made at the time, but it's, you'll see every well permit.
That's interesting. Okay, all right, uh, that wa- that was really the extent of my questions is, if we're gonna make a recommendation, I wanna see, you know, what the, you know, real action items are, what's gonna provide the greatest benefit to, you know, um, you know, the citizens of the county? And also, um, because I wasn't aware, you know, the, 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 the concern that was brought forth about who sits on the citizens committee? That's gotta be corrected. Okay, that's it for me.
Everybody hasn't really said it all.
You got yours answered?
Yeah.
Okay, um. So the solution for all these wells out there that are not drilled deep enough, I live in one of those neighborhoods, uh, is just to drop it deeper when it dries up, correct? But we're still sucking, we're still sucking water down and, and, uh, aquifers are going down slowly. Any solutions for replenishing water, like?
I mean, the, it's, it's not what anybody wants to hear, but if you can't get it from below you, you gotta bring it from somewhere else. Um, and so again, my, my assumption has been for a long time that we've been all alone, unaware, and unafraid. That we've, you know, we've conveniently ignored that we're next to co-, we're next to counties that are using renewable waters and we're not tapping those renewable supplies. Part of my concern is that we're now too expensive and too late in the game and too expensive to tap some of those resources. However, um, you know, I, I don't know what the economic model is gonna look like when it becomes, if there's enough citizens who are having to re-drill, ver-, you know, what's the cost of going down versus what's the cost of going over? I don't know where that decision point and where that number is, but there's a very real possibility we would end up with some folks actually having to make that decision. Is it worthwhile to get together with a couple of neighbors to drill a single deep and spread it around? Or go it on, you know, continue to go it on your own with an individual well? And a lot of that's a personal choice, but, I mean, I, I know this counting, I've been out here. You know, and the end of the day, a lot of it comes down to an economic decision. Um, has, you know, when, when values come into contact with each other, I love your individual property owner, but if the difference is money, I mean, it's at least worth having the conversation about what a cooperative system might start to look like. Not saying it's feasible right now, but there may be, there may be a point where it is. And renewable, I mean, again, to be very frank, picking off some of the renewals, renewable supply that's coming off of the front range and being stored, um, is a very real possibility, an expensive possibility, but a possibility nonetheless.
So, so long-term, I mean, I understand that these aquifers are on a limited basis. Um, but, but looking for the long-term picture would be to figure out how to store water or, or keep it from, uh, evaporating on the surface and, or collecting it? Um, but we're just not there yet.
Yeah, in tank, you know, there's, you know, you can store tanks to prevent the evaporation. Uh, you can pump it right back down to, you know, to keep it from, you know, going, going downstream. So there are, you know, there, there are again, some of these options, but as we start looking at some, as we start looking through them, you know, it's a, is it worth the investment? Is, is the individual homeowner and individual well owner in a position now to shift some of that over to community systems? Because those, you know, and, and ASR system starts to get a little spendy. And in fact, a lot of the options start to get real spendy, real, real fast.
Well, I appreciate you guys doing all the effort and, uh, presenting it. Um, I just see that it's, uh, an issue that, uh, it, it'll keep on occurring. And, uh, we just, we're fighting a battle of population versus water. That's all I got.
No, go ahead.
So, 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 you know, to, to his question, but also to Mike's point, you know, in what, in looking at, you know, everybody sticking their straw into the same, into the same pond, how do you then provide us then appropriate data associated with our four percent use of these aquifers against everybody else who's got their straw in the same aquifer? To me, that is, you know, again, based upon that question, but he really brought it up to begin with, is having that data so that we understand what are the statistical, um, um, you know, possibilities of more and more of these well situations occurring, you know, so that people can say, okay, I'm making an investment in this home, or I'm buying a home that has this potential, or I'm gonna, you know, be building a home on a piece of property and I, I need to know damn well based upon a policy or a suggestion to say, go to the goddamn bottom of that aquifer because the state is allowing you to do that. So, you know, yeah. It's, it's, it's like, maybe part of the, 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 one of the policies is, you know, having some sort of, you know, information sheet to hand, you know, prospective homeowners, you know, to say, this is what you're in for in this county, you know, as best as we know of today and based upon what's happening throughout the state.
And I, and I think that's covered in the citizen advisory panel.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And to me, that's probably the number one suggestion.
You're right.
Is that we get that up because there's a lot of misinformation floating around too. So the more good information we can get, the better off we are. And that, that's the way to do it.
Here's the information, and here's our recommendations based on that information.
And I, and, and again, I, I've been working with the noxious weed advisory board for, I don't know, eighteen months, a little bit longer, uh, since they, since they really stood up. And, I mean, they, they come to events, they've got their nice little poster board, hey, have you, you know, have you seen me? List of weeds, um, and, you know, it, it starts, it sparks a conversation with people who show up and say, oh, I thought that Canada thistle was a pretty flower. No, that Canada thistle is a noxious weed. And it's, so it's, you know, even if that, even if that, they can't do like a complete education series right then and there, it's at least starting a conversation with homeowners that gets them thinking about, well, am I looking at a weed or am I looking at a flower? Um, and again, I think that the way that they've done it is approach it primarily from an education and information standpoint. And they, and they've been relatively successful. The number of folks who show up, number of sort of pamphlets, you know, the, hey, the weed recognition books that they pass out at events that they're, you know, at the fair, at, at the Albert Days kind of stuff, they're passing out information, not to say everybody's using it, but the information is definitely out there. I like, I mean, I like the idea of, you know, uh, of some, some kind of pamphlet that everybody who shows up at the fair has an opportunity to say, hey, here's the, what the water supply is. Do you know what your well, here's how to look up your well permit? Even, you know, even something as simple as how to look up your well permit can start that conversation about, do you really know what's going on with water? Totally, you know, I, I can totally see that being an effective approach. Education, you know, nothing more than education. Start that conversation.
Hey Danny, one more quick question if I can. Um, any idea, speaking of information, how many re-drill permits we've had in the last year? Last two years, last three years, any data on re-drill permits that you can present to us today?
Redrills.
Redrill or regill?
Redrill.
Redrill.
Redrill, okay.
Yeah, re-drill, people having to lower their pump, I mean, those kinds of things, any data on that?
You're gonna have to look for specific purposes instead of pump replacement.
Yeah, or a well, just a well permit versus ju- just a well permit, but a re, a re-drill, or something like-
If it's a re-drill, we can get that information fairly quickly.
That should be accessible at the state.
Yeah, it's accessible to the state, I mean, every re-drill is attached with an A to the permit. So you'll have your six-digit number dash A.
Okay.
Um, or if it's a fee well, which I call a non-exempt, a dash F well, it's gonna have an R after it.
But for tonight's presentation, you have none of that data available?
I just don't have it presented out.
Okay.
In this, in this format. I have all-
Rough numbers, any, any idea?
I, I don't wanna speak out of turn. I'd say twenty-five percent of the four hundred, um, were re, were re-drills. Be a ballpark. I, I, but I don't want, I always hate throwing out numbers out of my hat in front of me, because I, I, I wanna look at that.
Well, you threw out that ninety percent number earlier. That's a pretty big scary number.
And I did look into, because I, one of the biggest concerns we had was frankly, citizens saying that the wells are going dry, or the-
Mm-hmm. Which creates a panic. Everybody thinks that we're running out of water, and what it sounds like is the water's there, it's just, but they're still gonna run out, their well's still gonna run dry. Their water, we have the water, but the well's gonna run dry.
Correct, and that's what I wanted to make sure. I was, I mean, it's a big issue. If the aquifers are going dry, we need to know that.
Yeah.
But if the aquifers aren't going dry, it's the way the wells are constructed. Now, there are always gonna be local impacts. I mean, there's an example, um, Green Valley Ranch was, was using Denver Basin groundwater to irrigate all courses and lots of other things. We saw a huge decline in the Denver Basin, caused a re, small regional area where aquifers were being drained because of so much sub- significant pumping up on a, on a very short time period. Soon as they shut those wells off, started doing something different, aquifers rebounded right away, because water comes in.
Sentence there where it says, worst case loans and grants to drill new wells, provable interference. That might have been an example of provable interference. But could you theoretically charge a impact fee to the developer on a per-unit basis to go into a, a fund that would be in escrow that those citizens could apply for if they could prove interference rather than taking out a loan?
Yeah, and, and again, this is one of those, we just gotta, we gotta figure out what craft in that particular policy actually looks like. You know, it, I, I would prefer for it to be a grant, um, but, you know, a, a low, a low-interest loan to get somebody past the hump, maybe it'll be on-
We all pay for it.
Yeah. And so, you know, and, and I, I think we just, we have not looked deep enough into it, um, as, as the staff to know if there's, you know, there may be in fact some puddle of money out there that we could tap into. To, again, I catch myself using all sorts, all sorts of water puns with this one, however. But, you know, if, if that, but if that, if that is a priority for the staff to, for us to find, you know, enough money to maybe get a couple of, you know, a couple of elderly households back in, you know, back in good shape, if that's our policy, that seems like a, you know, that seems like a pretty decent thing to do. I mean, not just a decent policy, but a decent thing to do for them. So if there are, you know, if there's homes that really do need that, and it's the difference between us finding a couple thousand dollars to maybe augment some of their budget for it, um, that, that seems like a pretty good-
It's a real thing. I actually met an elderly lady, and she had to re-drill a well, had to take out, take out a loan on her home that was free and clear. and she had to redrill a well, had to take out, take out a loan on her home that was free and clear. She had to take out a second, or actually it was a first mortgage because it was already paid off, but, yeah, it happens to them.
It's a real, I mean, and it, I mean, nobody's, nobody's gonna tell you, it's not a real thing. That there are some concerns out there and crafting the policy that says who's gonna be eligible, you know, what, how much that would be and where that money is gonna come from. That's a, you know, that seems like good work for a citizen water panel. Have I, have I stopped the citizen water panel thing quiet enough?
On the other side of that, I paid four grand for a well, I'm thirty years later and I haven't paid a water bill.
That's right.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it, it's.
Now, I, you know, and I, I just wanna give both sides because I really have no, I'll have a position on it and I won't say, but, yeah, but that's the other side, yeah.
One last question. As concerns, what county in the state of Colorado similar to ours is the star when it comes to water use planning and so on? Is there any county that we should be looking at to get examples of, of these policies or potential policies that are either, you know, enforced, mature and are working?
I think this is all, this is a conversation that's been had throughout the region and just starting to, will focus on this a lot. So I, I wouldn't say there's anyone that's a superstar yet, but there's, there's a lot of, a lot of policies that are being put in place to make improvements.
So, there's a bunch of counties in this same boat and the lake.
El Paso County has some good policy there, they're looking at some things. Arapahoe County is considering some, very similar as well, they're looking at groundwater developing, basically Denver Basin. All the development's gonna happen east of Denver, um, because Denver has a road water supply and how to deal with things. So they're looking at Denver Basin and thinking about policy, how they're gonna deal with Denver Basin development.
Yeah.
El Paso County is already doing that, Douglas County is going through a process of that. But assuming here too, uh, a water master plan, so I think in this very similar area, that's why everyone like this engaging regional partners and organizations is to go to your question as well, four percent comes out of the county. All kidding the regional collaboration with other counties, do the same here and then to figure out how is Denver Basin being evaluated, not just in the other county, but across Douglas, Arapahoe, Adams, maybe, they have a lot of service water up there, but, um, Douglas County and El Paso County, how can we?
Aurora, El Paso and Davis.
The, the Colorado Water Plan just recently prompted, um, counties to, to consider land use planning and matching that up with water supply planning. And so that's really gotten a lot of counties geared toward doing this because counties are not water providers, but they certainly have an interest in.
They do, yeah.
A controlling regulatory side, they can affect water use.
Dan, what do you, you got questions?
No.
Okay, um.
I've already said my.
Okay, you, you got your piece, everybody? Okay, um.
Well, I, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, I got my questions.
What? Oh, your question.
And I got some, some comments, okay, your presentat, your presentation was good, it did, however, you, you gotta go back to remember some of the numbers you put up there, how long these wells are gonna last. You know, how long these aquifers are gonna last? I think that number you had for the Upper Dawson is like four hundred years, that was a, that was the smallest number. Four hundred and some, yeah, and then you, the other ones you were looking at, I mean, the majority over a thousand years. So I mean, it's not like this is, is an emergent situation. Now, granted, there are people having issues with wells, I understand that. Older wells, which were specified here, I get that, and, yeah, I have actually heard of that, so. And I'm not gonna get into what that, but on your presentation, the one thing to kinda calm the fears from people is the water underneath, we, there's a lot of water. And when you look at those deeper aquifers, there's a hell of a lot of water. And granted, I understand that, and to our three hundred year water rule, I think we're just helping and supporting every county to the west of us because we are a reserve for them. And we are creating that with that three hundred year water rule. And now, I'm, just a comment, okay, truly, that's what we are. So, um, were you asked to present policies, right? Okay, you guys have to remember that when they were requested to do this study, they were asked to bring policies forward. So it wasn't like these guys brought these policies up here because we were asked in the study, and I don't know, I wasn't part of the committee, didn't, I didn't really know who selected, I think initially I was gonna be on it.
You were.
And I chose not to and won't go into why. Um, but they were asked to present policies, okay? So when you see them, you know, don't get too, you know, up in arms because they were asked to present those and they're gonna present those to the commissioners and the commissioners, I, I would suspect that they're gonna have some of the same feelings we all did, okay? So, all right, um. Now, to your sharing water, and this is one of my biggest points, to the sharing water, do you know our county has pretty much forbidden our developments from sharing water? You know that? If we have put that in stipulations in the SIAs in some of these big developments, we have restricted that. Well, I can tell you for independents, for certain, it's in the SIA, that they will not share water. It will not go outside their boundaries unless they have an outside source requested coming in. So in our county, that's something we as a county need to look at. Okay, because, you know, and I know the reasons we were so concerned about that because back at that time, it was, we didn't want water going out of our county, and I get it, okay? But if water goes out of that subdivision, to service another subdivision, that's not a bad thing. That's preservation, that really is, that's a good use of a resource. Okay, so that's something we really need to look at, I would say. Now, when we talk about collaboration with counties, with everybody else, and this is something that, that hasn't been, and I, and I was surprised you didn't, you didn't kinda bring it up. You know, Aurora, they did pipelines all the way from Brighton. They've got pipelines, they're leasing pipeline space all the way from the mountains to bring it down to the city. They bring it to, all they have is a development, a, a water treatment plant. They built an, a whole new one out in the east, okay? That's something that I thought would be presented because that's an opportunity. We've got many years to actually plan and do something. Leasing pipeline space, bringing water into our county to a containment area that would service our citizens as an additional resource so we get away from the groundwater use. Okay, that was a thought. Okay, another thought, Parker did it, we always, we jump all over Parker. We don't wanna be a Parker, but you know what, they've got a reservoir. You know, they've secured a water source for many years for their citizens. Denver's done a lot of the same. So I mean, I, I thought this plan might show a little bit more how we could collaborate with counties because I know leasing space in these pipelines, you know, if we could just own the water, that would be a way, the only thing we'd have to find is a place to bring it in here. Okay, that was, that was one. Um, no plans on renewable, I spoke to that, limit any county control over water rights. Okay, um, you guys, I, I, this, and this is a personal thing. Okay, I would limit any kind of control whatsoever the county has on, pretty much on anything, on property rights, on, on water, on everything, okay? You know, control is a nasty word in some circumstances. Um, you know, when you talk about control, that's a word, that's a word used primarily in two forms of government that I'm not really fond of. Okay, so I'm a firm believer in, you know what, people, it's their rights, it's their water, it's their property. Even if they own a little speck of property, that's theirs. And I like to preserve that, so. Don't need an answer, okay? Now.
Now my.
Vote.
I make a motion that we, uh, request that you.
Recommend.
Recommend that you, uh, present this to the Board of County Commissioners with the two things that Danny added. One, add water sharing provisions, okay? And two, uh, review, uh, how we can bring in water.
If I can, if I can add, just.
Go ahead, please, please.
In the twenty eighteen rural water supply study, we did talk about the, uh, the renewable water possibly crossing the county and dying into that. And we also did an amendment to that, uh, study where we talked about reuse options, treatment in the, in the busier areas of the county. So there was some more work we did on that. We were asked to focus on groundwater specifically with this water master plan.
Well, the reuse is something that I, I think is ongoing and people are well aware of and they try to use it as much as possible. I mean, most of the developments anymore, particularly the bigger ones that are gonna drill deeper wells, they look at that and say, hey, let's reuse the water too. I know that they do, uh, now these.
Pardon me, Commissioner Sands. Pardon me, Commissioner Sands, would you repeat your motion, please? I didn't get the two conditions.
My motion?
Because I didn't get the two conditions.
Okay, I'm sorry.
First of all, Dan, if you said those two things, we need to go around and be sure that those, those additions.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
Are, is, is everybody okay with those additions? That I really didn't expect them to go on there, so go around the board.
Well, if, if we're gonna make a recommendation to the board, if this should be accepted and not, I think it should be cleaned up. And some of the, some of the errors that we talked about, take out a graph that we're not referencing. If we're referencing one population projection, don't have a graph in there from some other projection. Um, and I don't really feel comfortable with this being a comprehensive water plan or a master plan for us if there's no information as far as the, what the other county's projected water is. I mean, you're saying it's gonna last for nine thousand years or four hundred years, whatever it is. Well, that's just at our rate of depletion.
Well, we have to look at what they were asked to do. And that, that's the thing, okay? Were you asked, or was that in your scope of work to analyze the other counties? That, see, because I know on the, on the initial one, it wasn't. And I, and I wanna know if it was on this one.
Well, can I make?
You know, please do.
One of the things that's in here, okay, was included here, was to put together this committee or whatever it is, okay, to look at this and to communicate with the other counties.
And I think they did that.
And you did that, okay, well, that's the best you can probably do at this point.
Yeah, I, I agree, man.
Because we're gonna spend a lot of money if you go out and try to do the same thing.
For ninety-two thousand dollars, we're not gonna get an in-depth, in-depth study from.
Exactly, right.
From, uh.
It's a lot of money.
Douglas and El Paso.
Let the committee do that, okay, go out and, and see. They, they do the investigation, well, this committee that we put together, that's put together.
And Mike, on your point, what I would think would be a good thing to put in there is that if we could approach, because I think Douglas County is doing, is starting a study, correct? I think that we could approach Douglas County.
And one of the things you proposed.
And be a, and play a role in their.
Go back to your.
What do you think? Because that's the biggest user.
It is, I just think it's not, it's not very comprehensive to me, looking at us in a bubble on how long our water's gonna last if we're not even looking at at all what their current use is of, of these counties. We're four percent. How does that, how does that give us the information we need? You don't know it's gonna last four hundred years or nine thousand years.
Well, so maybe the question should be that last column where it says, number of years deplete the confined storage, is that inclusive of everybody else also depleting that?
No.
That's only if we were sucking out of that particular.
Hmm, in a bubble.
And so that's it, that's to Mike's point, it's in a bubble, it's erroneous information. If everybody else is sucking from the same.
At ninety-six.
Yeah, at, now, the, the balance is, is that, you know, four hundred and sixty-three really a hundred?
That volume is underlying Albert County.
Underlying Albert County, so.
If you look at it from a broader picture, how much of the, uh, well users throughout this whole region are gonna be on renewable water, how much, there's a lot of moving parts there.
I, I understand, I understand.
That's also why they use confined storage for their calculations.
Right. Okay.
No, I mean, I think it's now, so with El Paso finished, I believe they're done with theirs and Arapahoe's. Arapahoe's was just adopted this morning.
Okay.
So, so we have, so there is now, in theory, data from both of those places. Um, and, you know, a year, eighteen months, probably closer to eighteen months for Douglas County, we would have theirs completed and we would have a pretty good, we would eventually get to a place. Again, my appeal is for us to be involved in the regional and cross borders.
They don't have any older studies.
So that once we get them all, we can say, look, you MFs, you're sucking up all the water.
Well, and I would like a collaborative effort between all of us because it's a problem we're all gonna have to face, all the counties around you and the cities.
Especially for the storage for these other counties.
But don't they have any older data that we could look at and say, okay, well, we're gonna project that out? And, you know, just because they don't have their new study done for another year and a half or whenever their new study's gonna be, don't they have a study done in two thousand and eighteen like ours was that says, okay, this is what we're using right now, this is what we're projecting we're gonna use? And then we can at least look at some data to, to get better projections on drawdown.
And I, and I think that's a, um, so I believe, I believe we're still waiting, I believe we're still waiting for, um, the USGS guys to come back with their five-year wrap-up after the, which started in twenty eighteen, or started in twenty nineteen, nineteen.
Really good idea.
So, um, the, the USGS guys are supposed to come back to us with a more comprehensive look. They're the ones who are taking, to be honest, they're the ones who are taking the most comprehensive look at the entire aquifer. They're the ones who are looking at the model from Cheyenne down to Colorado Springs, from, you know, the edge of the foothills all the way out to, you know, the edge of the Republican River. So the USG, the USGS study really is, you know, our, some of our contribution to that and the well monitoring program that, that we're gonna fund is also informing that USGS overall look at what the aquifer's doing, so it's.
So what I was thinking, and, and, good idea, um, is that, um, you guys have probably fulfilled your, your contractual obligation to, to deliver what, what was asked, okay? And I think it was actually less than the initial one, because I think the one in eighteen was a hundred and forty thousand, wasn't it?
Yeah, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, so, and this one was ninety-two?
It's a ninety-five-ish.
Ninety-five, okay. Okay, now, as a follow-up, I would think maybe, and this would probably be another scope of work, and, and this would have to go before the commissioners and ask for this, but to evaluate what these other counties and compare.
As an action item.
Yes, and I don't know that we can, we can state it as an action item, you know, that, that the board can consider, but would that, is that doable to take? Because you say Douglas County is gonna be done with theirs, so you've got Arapahoe County, you've got.
El Paso.
El Paso, and, and if you could analyze, now I know it'd be another scope, another contract, another, more work essentially, but is there a way you could do that?
And refine those numbers.
And then, and then.
We'd be able to get a more of a regional, regional.
And then that would give us a, a, a. And then that would give us a, a, a regional look at actually what's going on. And though that is a motion that you would, we could propose to the BOCC, that you look at it this way.
See, I don't know what the original scope of work entailed and what that, what that was, what, what the assignment was and what it was contracted.
Because it was truly, that's, that's a lot to go, because you had to analyze city usage, all the towns out here, future uses, and get all their data and everything else.
And the USGA data.
Well, Danny, can, can we just re, just include that in the motion?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about because, I mean, unless.
And the motion would be looking forward to, to analyzing data from other counties.
Yes.
And the USGA.
Would that fit?
That's better.
Okay. All right, Dan. Try that again.
Make a motion that we, uh, uh, request that you provide the same, the presentation to the Board of County Commissioners and include the three things now that we were talking about. All right, which are, Danny?
Okay, well, we were talking about, um, outside sourcing of water.
Get a, overall picture of, of the aquifers.
Aquifers.
Okay, that's one.
And the, the two I was kind of primarily concerned with was collaboration with other counties in, in bringing, uh, water into our county. Through a pipeline or something like that, some kind of look at that, because that was not in here. Because I think that truly is the answer it takes. I, I really do. That gets us away from groundwater. And then the other.
Edits, again.
Yeah, I think we.
I think that's appreciated.
I think we, we gotta do some minor edits on the population projections and, and then the gentleman's not a citizen in Albert County. That's, that's a, it takes away any credibility of the report when it's just false.
Did you get all those? Brenda. You can't follow it? Okay, okay.
I make a motion that they present this to the Board of County Commissioners, provide the presentations to county commissioners and include, okay, the, uh, uh, request that you look at the entire aquifer, not just Albert County. Correct?
Okay, um. You want me to try? Okay. I'll, I'll try. Here, Brenda, we move that, we wanna move that, um, BOCC considered accepting the study with the following conditions. The first condition is to, in the future, analyze use from other counties. I want to give you a chance to write it. Okay, and how it compares to our county. Okay, that's the first one. The second one was Mike's cleaning up the specifics that are stated as far as population projections and involvement, citizen involvement in the steering committee. Popu- population projections and citizen involvement in the steering committees. And that, that'll.
Necessary now? I mean, this is already done, so.
And then the third would be to evaluate other water in, introductions of water into the county. I get it? Okay, good. That, that's what matters. Thank you. Okay, so the motion's out there.
I'll second it.
Okay. Are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we, you good, Mike? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll get working again.
Thank you very much. All right, yes.
I just wanted to thank Mark and Eric for their leadership on, uh, helping us, guiding us through this, uh, water master plan. They did a fine job. We're great to work with.
Thanks for all the work. All right, so. Brenda, we don't have anything else, right? Is that the end of it? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Please.
I'll second it.
Okay, we're good. Okay, all right.